Get it under control here. I'm going to call to order the Sparks Planning Commission for March 5, 2015 at 6:00 PM and have a real call.
Commissioner Cew.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Noe.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders. Absen. Commissioner Vols.
Here.
Commissioners Spurber.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Thornley.
Here.
City Planner Armando Ormanos.
Here.
All right, thank you. So now it's public comment. This item is for you to public comment on any action item or for general public comment is limited more than three minutes, no more than three minutes for each commentator. So, not seeing anybody coming up, so we'll close the public comment. And I will have the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we have the approval of minutes.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that'll pass. So do we have any announcements or committee reports?
We have, the one announcement is that at the March 19 meeting, there will be a workshop on the zoning code update. We will meet in City Hall in the basement so we can have a more informal discussion and presentation. And that will start at 6:00 PM and at 5:30, we will provide pizza or sandwiches or something in the adjacent room, but the workshop will start at 6:00 PM.
All right. Well, do we have any informational items?
No, we do not.
Okay. So now we'll go to the public hearing items. So we'll start with PCN 15044. Christinat addition? Christinat, okay. And Caramella, will be presenting?
Before you tonight is a review, a consideration and possible action on a major deviation request. The property owner is requesting to a reduction of 50% in their rear setback at 1717 Rio Tinto Drive. You can see this is the location here. This is McCarran and Prater here, so it's in that subdivision there. This is the site plan of his property. The applicant is requesting to reduce the rear setback from 20 feet to 10 feet. The lot shape is basically five-sided with two rear property lines. On the southwest corner of the rear property, the proposed encroachment is approximately six feet, while on the northwest rear property line, there is only one point where it encroaches to 10 feet into the required setback. For most of the addition, the northeast side of average encroachment is about nine feet. The existing house is 1833 square feet and the addition is 864 square feet. Portion of the addition will intrude to the rear setback is approximately 272 square feet, which represents 31% of the total square footage of the addition. The total lot coverage will be at 39.9% coverage of the lot. Staff is recommending approval with four conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Karen, you sent us some information about feedback from neighbors and others. Can you summarize that for us, please?
Yes, I've received five phone calls from neighbors. Actually, none of them were adjacent to this property. They're all down the street, but everybody was very positive about it. Everybody thought, oh, that's great. They're going to actually improve the neighborhood, you know, by adding to the existing house. Nobody had any negative comments or problems with the property. And the list that I sent you has the names of the people that contacted me and their street address.
Karen, one of the people on the list was Mike Maskley, I believe, and his address was 899 La Linda. I cannot find any La Linda.
I didn't look it up. I'm just writing, I just wrote down what the addresses they gave me, and he does not live at those residence. These are rental properties, these two addresses, 966 La Sierra and then 899 La Linda. I apologize, I never, I just wrote down the address that he's told me over the phone. I never checked to see if it was a valid address or not.
Now, on a project like this, do the neighbors, do they have to be notified?
Yeah, we notify the neighbors within 500 feet of the property.
So all the neighbors around were notified?
Oh, you had a lot of people.
No, everybody was like, no.
Okay, that's all I have.
As far as the applicant here, would you like to?
Come up and say anything? A representative, the applicant?
No, we just feel that.
Well, if you want to come forward, just state your name.
I'm Mike Tribble, the architect for the client, Mr. Walt Christinat, and we just wanted to expand the house because it's a tiny little house with not much room in it. So we're demolishing some of the internal non-structural walls to create a large master suite with a master bedroom, and when we do that, it takes the house down from a four-bedroom house to a two-bedroom house, and he didn't want to lose the resale value. So we're, once we expanded the kitchen a little bit, there was like no room left to put the bedroom, to make up for that bedroom. So we are, that's why we're asking for the reduction.
From the setback?
Yes, sir.
Is the, who's going to, who's the contractor going to be doing this?
He's out of Lake Tahoe and, what is his name? Morong? He's Hungarian and he does great work.
Okay, bye, Mike. I bet he does.
He has a strange name, but he's.
Do you know if the, is there gas that's going to be moved? I mean, for the heat, obviously it's.
We're putting in a new furnace.
New furnace?
Yes.
Is the range gas or electric?
It'll be gas.
It'll be gas, so you're going to be moving gas?
Um.
The gas service?
Did you want electric or gas? What do you got now?
Well, that's what I, I was just curious on.
We have gas, but whatever's most efficient or what's the use for the contractor?
They'll have to get permit. That'll be all part of their building permits.
Yeah. All right. But we're not trying to get the existing furnace, which is really old and dilapidated, to accommodate this new stuff. We're going to have a new furnace, and right now the furnace is in the house and we're going to move it into the garage.
One of the points you said, and I want to make sure, what we're actually doing is reducing the number of bedrooms in this house, right? From four to two? Is that correct?
It'll be, if this is approved, it'll be from four to three.
Four to three?
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make, you know, that that's.
Just part of the addition is a new bedroom.
Exactly. No, that's good. I'm just pointing that out.
All right, well, bring it back for a motion?
You have to open the public.
Oh, public comment, yes. This is a public hearing item, so if there's anybody from the public, you'd have three minutes to talk. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing item and bring it back.
Can I make motion here?
Need that.
I move to approve the major deviation associated with PCN 15004 adopting findings MD1 through MD5, and in fact, supporting these findings that set forth in the staff report, subject to the conditions of approval 1 through 4 is listed in the staff report.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Still, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, good luck, guys.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
I'll look forward to reviewing the building plans.
All right, so that'll be the end of the public hearing items. And, well, we're going to talk about PCN. We'll have 15003?
We actually erroneously agendized this as a public hearing, so you will have to open the public hearing.
Okay, okay.
Before you tonight was going to be a tentative map request for fountain house at Victorian Square. However, recently we encountered some problems on one of the properties, potentially, potentially soil contamination. So we are in the process, the city is in the process of hiring a consultant to evaluate this. So what the staff is asking tonight is that we have some time to evaluate the potential problems on this property. So we're asking that you continue this tentative map until our April Planning Commission. And at this point, we don't know if it's going to be the 2nd or the 16th in April. So staff is asking that you continue this item until April Planning Commission.
This item, assuming it comes back, is not a public hearing item, is a general business item?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, this is a public hearing item for PCN 15003. So if anybody would like to speak on it?
I think.
All right. Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing item.
I move to continue this item until the April meeting.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll continue until April.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll move to general business. City of Sparks 2014 Annual Report to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency. Jim Rundle presenting.
Jim Rundle, senior planner here to present the annual report every year by the Nevada Reby statutes. The agencies that participate in the regional plan are required to provide an annual report back to the Regional Planning Commission and Governing Board regarding certain items as outlined by the statute and as outlined by regional plan. We've presented the planning commission with a report on those respective items. As we write back to regional planning, certain items have been omitted because we simply don't do those certain things. But I'll just go through the annual report quickly. Some of the items that the planning commission is very familiar with, other items that, like the CIP, you guys don't typically participate in. But in the most, one of the more exciting items that the planning commission will be participating in is the update to the zoning code, which is coming, or we're bringing to you with a workshop in two weeks, as the city planner explained during the informational items. This process is a third phase of a three-phase approach in updating the zoning code. The planning commission has been very familiar and very participatory in that three-phased approach. Today's major deviation was one of the items that we identified in the initial analysis of the three-phased approaches to a way to help citizens do something that's outside the code and not necessarily require a variance, because the variance standards or findings are so difficult for people to adhere to. We do expect that this, that the new zoning code will be going forward to the planning commission for, or we're hoping that based on public testimony and that kind of thing, our stakeholder meetings, we will bring that back for formal adoption maybe in June and ultimately take it to the council in June or so to hopefully update the new zoning code. A zoning code that will take the transit-oriented development standards, the design standards and the existing zoning code, the Title 20, merge them into one document. As you go on to page two of the report, I wanted to talk about, touch on another item that you were scheduled to consider tonight, and that was the fountain house project, the tentative map. In 2000, or late last year, 2014, the city redevelopment agency entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement. So essentially, the city has already at this time reviewed an administrative review, which is more commonly known as site plan review, but that is something in the new zoning code we are proposing, rebranding the site plan review process to the administrative review process. But the developer is proposing to construct 236 multifamily units and approximately 9,000 square feet of restaurant and other retail uses in proximity to the existing cinema, which I think everybody that's been around Sparks is kind of excited to hear about. Redevelopment agency, or the redevelopment area's been in place for a long time. It's exciting to see more activity. We haven't seen much lately. The other item that our regional planning commissioners will be more familiar with is the approval of the 900 or so units over on Marina Gateway Drive. I say the regional planning commissioners because the other planning commissioners did not necessarily review it as a special use permit, because it was also done as an administrative review. But because it was a project of regional significance, it was required to be reviewed at the regional planning commission level. So when you saw it there, it was the first time you had seen it, but it was a testimony to the work you had done as a planning commission to master plan area within the TOD, set the standards for the area in the TOD, and basically say, you comply with these standards, get your building permit and go. Well, most projects don't trip those thresholds of a project of regional significance. So we've done numerous administrative reviews, that one you just ended up seeing at the regional planning level. Also, in 2014, the 180,000 square foot big box retail was approved, and you all know what business that was for. Those proposals required, or that proposal required the upgrades, as the planning commission approved by condition to Marina Gateway, and that was to take that from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. Of course, the 900-plus residential units on Marina Gateway are, have been considered with the upgrades to Marina Gateway. In the affordable housing realm, in 2013, the Washoe County Home Consortium approved a project over on the corner of Lincoln and Fourth Street, just catty corner from Spark City Hall. It formerly had a dilapidated vacant house on it that's been taken down and it's cleared, and so the approval was to construct a senior housing facility over there. In 2014, I think, we did an administrative review on that process, and then I believe they have now submitted for building permit on that site. It has been agendized for the home consortium or the technical review committee for next week that that senior housing project is requesting additional funding. So at the time I sent the staff report to you, they had not officially requested to be on an agenda, but they are now, and so I can get back to you on how that turns out, but right now they are asking for additional funding through the home consortium. Another exciting item for the planning commission is, I believe that the city council recently approved, or it was submitted in the budget, is money to undergo a master plan process. The city has not gone under an official master plan update process since, I think, 1991. Most of the, most of the changes to the master plan have even been, either been requested by a developer or requirements out of the regional plan update process that we, that we would undergo every five years. So they've been patchy updates. This would be a more comprehensive overhaul to the, to the master plan, and that's kind of exciting in the, in the world of planners. If you review, when you, when the regional planning commissioners, our representatives reviewed the city's master plan, I think at their last regional planning commission meeting, there was a list of scheduled additions. That wasn't to say that the city is not in conformance with the current regional plan. It was to say, here's some items you haven't addressed. Those items I touched on in the annual report, and that was to basically say, these are things that we plan on wrapping up in our comprehensive overhaul of the, of the new master plan. And that includes complete streets, trails, transportation, population elements, housing elements, those kinds of items. Some of them are required by the state statutes, other required by the regional plan, others are simply at the desire of our planning commission and city council. The current regional plan is the 2012 regional plan. While it was adopted in 2013, the actual name is the 2012 regional plan. In 2017, five years later, there'll be a requirement to do another, either update or overhaul to the regional plan. As planning commissioners, you've all been here at this point long enough to understand the challenges with some of the transit-oriented development. Part of it was the timing and the downturn in the economy, in my opinion, as reflected by tonight's agenda and more recent agendas. You've had, the city has seen a desire to do some compact urban type of development within the TOD corridor. So it was not simply a lack of development because the standards were in place, it was a lack of development because of the world that we were in for eight years, or whatever amount of time you want to, you want to consider. So, but what we, what we have identified is that maybe across-the-board standards for both Reno and the city of Sparks in regard to residential densities and floor area ratios may not be appropriate in a broad brush from essentially Sparks Boulevard down Prater and Victorian, all the way down Fourth Street to Virginia, and then all the way north, I think Reno's goes quite, quite north, and then all the way basically south to the Mount Rose Highway, that those floor area ratios and residential densities may not be appropriate to be 1.5 and to be 30 dwelling units per acre. So one of the things we, we will be proposing, and it's listed in your annual report, is a review of the minimum densities and floor area ratios. A real robust identification of where transit-oriented development, or what ultimately in our area we probably think is more like mixed-use development and creating walkable areas as opposed to complete reliance on, on a transit corridor. You may, you may see that certain pods or nodes, or whatever word you want to use, are more appropriate than a, than a, so like a buttoned-up shirt as opposed to a zippered-up jacket, is what we are thinking may be more appropriate. But all of these kinds of standards are, are not necessarily just for the city of Sparks to undertake, or it's going to require a regional plan overhaul update process that is very robust and includes Reno at the table and ultimately the supporting agencies such as RTC and even, even our, even Tomwa or people in the, our engineers that are taking care of the sewer. Sewer lines in these areas are what they are. Most of these areas are redevelopment areas that are previously developed anyway, and so some of the capacities and the lines aren't what they need to be to support 40 dwelling units per acre or a floor area ratio of 1.5. Those are the things that we've listed as most important to us as, and hopefully the planning commission to have ultimately regional planning, I guess, spearhead and a robust consideration of the mixed regional plan. Whereas you may remember that the 2012 regional plan, for the most part, was taking the 2007 cover sheet and changing 07 to 12 and approving it. And, and it does need more, it does need, in my, our opinion, a more robust effort this next time around. What we've asked you to do is what we ask you to do every year is endorse the annual report that we've put in front of you. Most of it is a report, not, it's not policy, we're not proposing policy to you, it's things you've already done, and so we're asking you to endorse a recommendation and of approval to forward to the regional planning commission and regional planning governing board. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Chairman? Jim, I have a question.
Sure.
On page five, under See Public Services and Facilities, number four, Annexation, says Sparks did not annex any property in 2014. I thought we did that one off Shadow Lane.
That was, I think, in 2013.
What was it?
The.
The lawyer or the attorney?
I think, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, it was 2013.
Oh, really?
Uh huh.
Where did 14 go then?
I don't think we did any annexations.
Well, that was the only one I've known for, for quite a while, but I thought it was, I could have.
And it was in two, last year's annual report too, so.
Was it? Okay.
So when I used the template, I was able to take that one off. But yeah, we, we did, we did annex three parcels for the Iding annexation last, in 2013.
Jim, real quick, I don't know if this is the right place to ask, but the, on the redevelopment area of the Sparks Marina, has there, has there been any movement in the parking garage thinging?
Yes.
That's looking there?
Oh, you wanted more than that?
Yes, or what's movement on that there in front of the?
You will, actually, at your April meeting, you will see a set of amendments to the handbook for Marina Village, which are intended to facilitate the completion of that particular project. So basically, a developer, buyer has acquired the property. It's the same investment group and development team that is, that acquired the 10 acres from the redevelopment agency on Marina Gateway Drive as well as the adjacent tankers, and so they are going to be looking to proceed with constructing units around that garage, and this handbook amendments are the request to, to us to facilitate that.
Those will be condominium units?
They'll have a map on them, but they will probably initially be operated as apartments.
As apartments.
They're already subdivided. They're already airspace condominiums, so there's, there is actually parcel lines around the.
Oh, there is.
You just, obviously, you can't see them, but yeah, there's floating parcels around the parking garage currently.
But they're, they're looking to do different maps, so they will be basically replacing the one that's there with a new one, essentially.
I just have a comment of, should be here in our meeting on 19. The gateway, Marina Gateway Drive, seems like we need a gateway there. It's just better, you know, like a Berkeley kind of, needs to be enriched, just seems to be very humble compared to what we're trying to do later in the day gateway.
Well, the, the, I can't remember what the Marina Gateway project is called, but the 900-plus units that are proposed for Marina Gateway that the regional planning commission reviewed as a project of regional significance is already approved. No, they're not in for building permit, but, but they are already approved with an administrative review, so they have an entitlement to construct, to move forward with getting a building permit on those, Commissioner Camerata. At next, in two weeks, when we have our workshop, you will see some standards in the proposed zoning code that implement some of the concepts that we've used in handbooks, for example. And in handbooks, for example, Wingfield Springs or Cimarron, if you come into Cimarron from the north off of La Pasada, you have the nice entry with the water, water fountain and that kind of thing. And then if you come into Wingfield from Vista, you see the, the Wingfield Springs and the Windmill. If you go in further east on Vista, you go into the foothills and you have the fountain there, and it says foothills. So, so some of the concepts you'll be able to consider, review, is that when you construct a project over so many units that you have to do some type of gateway entry and that kind of thing. I don't know, though, that this project would necessarily be bound by that because they will be previously entitled by a different zoning code. So, but those are some of the concepts that, because we've identified, identified we need that kind of thing. We've been doing it in this, in the north, in the north Sparks, but we haven't necessarily had it in the older area because the zoning code was from 1976. but we haven't necessarily had it in the older area because the zoning code was from 1976. The TOD project, of course, was approved through the TOD design standards, but the design standards didn't really require a gateway. So at this point, if there were any type of gateway theme, it would have to probably be done by the city or something. But anyway, looking forward, when you review these codes, these are the kinds of concepts that hopefully the planning commission will be thinking about. If it's not in the code, this is our opportunity for the planning commission to bring it up and say, I think we should consider this, and we can, and we can, that's what the workshop will be for, is those kinds of concepts of, hey, we've got this coming in, do we think of creating some type of gateway?
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jim? All right, move back to commission, we've, for a motion.
What? Do we have a motion?
Suggest a motion.
There's a motion.
Would you like me to make one?
Yes, please, Ron.
I'm going to forward to the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Commission and the governing board the city's Sparks annual, annual report for calendar year 2014.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, great job, Jim. All right, so public comment. This is for general public comment, limited items that do not appear on the agenda and is limited to more, no more than three minutes. So not seeing any public, I will close public comment and ask Furnager.
I have a question.
Yes.
Comments from the commission?
Oh, comments for commissioners.
Because I don't know the answer to this, and maybe you can help us or someone can help us. When we, when these regional trails are put in as part of any new development, who is responsible after that for the ongoing upkeep and maintenance of that regional trail?
If the city has accepted the regional trail, then it's the city's responsibility. Some of the portions that were built as regional trails do not meet the development sta, the quality that the city would like to see, and we did not, we have not accepted them. But generally, if the city did accept them, then it's our responsibility to maintain the regional trail.
I happen to go for a walk on the regional trail that goes from the, the project that relays there at Wingfield Spring, at the entrance of Wingfield Springs, the trail that goes north, I guess, from there, which is in horrible shape. But I, I don't know who, who to tell that to.
That's the HOA.
Yeah, that's the HOA, because I believe that's one of the portions of the regional trail that the city did not accept.
Did not accept, so that's an HOA issue.
I believe that is one. You could check with Rick Darby in the Parks Department, and he would be able to tell you if that's one that the city has taken over. Start with Rick Darby in the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you.
So that goes through a dedication of those, and if they accept it, then they dedicate, and it goes over, and if, and if they don't, it stays in this kind of a...
Yeah, basically, we have standards, and if they're not constructed to our standards, then we won't accept them.
Then we don't, the dedication isn't approved, and it stays underneath the...
HOA.
Right, okay. So we do have some of those in the city.
Yes.
But I'm guessing the city would rather have the HOA take, maintain those and up to, you know, obviously good standards, so that there isn't a maintenance by the city.
Correct. What do you want?
You know, I can't actually answer that question.
You'd need to direct that to Rick Darby.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, curious, thank you.
Good question.
But it is bad.
Actually.
That one is.
They also put that, on that trail, they recently put in an illegal ADA, did you see that? And the city's become aware of that, and it doesn't meet the slope standards. The problem is it's on HOA right of way, so the city won't, that's another reason the city wouldn't take, take that project. I think we also require concrete for a regional trail.
Yes, we do. 10 feet wide of concrete.
That one is a portion of the asphalt.
Thanks. All right, well, any more comments for commissioners? All right, Mitch, I'll ask you for a German. Does your...
For a German?
Second. All right, thanks, guys.